Right, everybody attention. It is now seven oh two on Monday, December 20th, 2021. Hereby, our meeting of the board of education of the New Orleans Public School District Order. This is a scheduled meeting of the New Orleans Public School District Order Education. The meeting in public for goodbye to public meetings. The public is invited to watch the proceedings as a board. There will be an opportunity for public participation in the open forum sessions of the meeting in a little bit. If you are uncomfortable with open forum comments and questions, may only proceed to the board head of administration through email and phone calls. Mr. Brown, please call the roll.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Marner.
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Here.
Four board members present.
We are all present. The sign on the motion for the approval of tonight's agenda. On my here.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Marner.
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Where she carries four zero. Okay, well, this is a bittersweet meeting suite that we're in in the year, everyone in the holiday season, but bitter because we're saying goodbye to three board members who have given us a lot of time and a lot of efforts and have done a lot of great things for the school district. Judy, Henry, Bill is at their Brown, working at the Browns game, he's a Steelers fan too, so he's probably one of them on the lake. But not thank you enough for your time and your service. And I would say this, you know, every, every district goes through periods of tragedy and whatnot, and certainly we have. But to lead this district through what has been, you know, consistently for the last almost years now, probably the most difficult challenge in time, trying to work through COVID and all of that, I can't thank you enough for all the effort that you put in. I do know this, as we all know, we don't always agree, but we always know that we're doing what we feel is best for our kids. I can't thank you enough for that. I wish you the absolute best. Thank you for the service to the New Orleans schools and children of our district. I wish you all the best. If anybody else would like to say anything, you are welcome.
Gentlemen, I was just talking about this the other day. When was the last time we actually had a board member seem to cycle off? We've had a lot of reservations over the years, so to suddenly have three people choosing to cycle off at the same time, we were both kind of thinking it really hasn't happened in a long time. But I just want to thank Bill and Henry and Judy for their service. Henry's been here for years, it's a long time. Bill and Judy have been appointed in a little while now, but thank you for all your service.
I know Bill's not able to be with us tonight to do more, but he came in a time when we as a nation were feeling after the part of students. Hey, you know, we're thinking about kids and schools and safety and security. And Bill rose to that challenge and came to join us here on the board. And we just had confidence of having that role of safety and security. He volunteered it. My goodness, every kind of something along those there volunteer. He took on additional responsibilities, serving as our district representative for the XTC. This past year, and I'm really grateful for the time he's going to have to stay up here in the leadership position in the district. Judy, you have been a strong advocate for our students and our families. I'm thanking for the work at the foundation. I think that has just been just at the forefront of your heart. And it shows month to month after month, your broad background. I don't think anyone could realize how broad her background is in these past two years. Your, your background on heads has been amazing. And I thank you for your service to our students and to our district for your service. And Henry, you have given more to this district than it is. You two young gentlemen are sitting here at the crowd this evening, and I'm assuming she went to the kindergarten, let's see, a little bit. That's on the walk in before that recently, oh my! So even long before I could comprehend what you have done, guiding through, working through PTA, even leadership in PTA. Eight years as a board member, the committee you've continued to grow in that as those years pass, you've been a strong proponent of public education. And I thank you immensely for that. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all these years of service. Because at the true heart of everything, every decision, every vote you have made within these eight years and the service that you've given within, you've always had to be in your heart and you should be there.
Have a big round of applause for Henry. And the two of our board members out there, who choose, we're looking forward to you joining us again.
Henry, Judy, do you have anything you want to say or?
Oh, I do. I'm just saying it was activated.
All right, what's on?
Just one more.
Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is the appointment of the president's pro tem for the January 10th, 2022 organization. So our terms and arguments are clear first, we need to have a motion to call a meeting to order a cycle meeting for January 10th, and then we will vote for a presidency that president will take over at that point. So, with this sign, I will ask for a nomination to appoint the president pro tem for the January 10th, 2022 organization.
Can I nominate Matt Kerny? I don't know if it's to get this one in first.
I don't know.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, you know, if you come happy and need your place and I didn't know. Get their feet wet.
I didn't know what to say.
Okay, another nomination. All right, so I am nominated by Judy and seconded by Liz. I get a motion to determine other nominations.
I can.
Yeah, I know, that's not going the right way. So when it doesn't, it's about thirty seconds, so it's not a good deal. So can I ask for a motion to propose the nomination?
I'll, I'll second.
Mr. Marner? Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Ms. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Can I say?
Nominations.
Where she carries.
Okay. Sorry, Matt doesn't completely understand. Strong, I'm summarizing my way through the script here. So now we need to do the roll call of the nomination of Chad Warren, who did the pro tem for the January 10th organization.
Mr. Marner?
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Ms. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Austin.
Where she carries, please go.
There you go. By a formative roll call vote, voted to nominate Chad Warren, ask for a motion to appoint, like, again?
You just asked for a motion.
Okay. By a formative roll call vote, voted to nominate, meaning board president asks for a motion to appoint Chad Warren, the president pro tem for the January 10th, 2022 organization. Is that people voting for a motion?
I'm on it.
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm stumbling, sorry, Matt, I'm on the.
Mr. Marner?
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Ms. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Austin.
We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out from now on.
I'm wondering if literally it took longer than you'll be.
Okay, open forum. Do you have any other questions? Open forum. Any reports? No, I'm going to keep on my own.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
I, yeah, I shall report to the foundation. Children and masters all gave a little summary of their school activities that they were getting ready for grade, that they were getting ready for their holiday activities. The high school guidance officers are reiterating their support services just to help more students. And they had an initiative giving out birthday cake boxes to the Knights' Merry for Nights. And it is an awesome idea. I haven't heard of it. I'm dying to try it. But it's a pan that's set up mixed with the yellow cake mix in a pan, and it's based into a birthday cake, and then it can be a prostitute because the CDs have wiped. Taking care of students and feeding them, we're probably overlooking a very major event in their life. And this is a way to help put recognition that has had. And just to show the generosity of the Nassau Joint Police Department, they donated leftover money from shotguns to offset the top loss of these birthday boxes. So they, I think they said they had something like eighty of them ready for wrapping all as needed. But Knights' Merry for Nights are active. They have currently sixty-three students participating in the weekly back-up program. They've done about thirteen trips to the after food bake since late July to build up the pantry. And from what I understand, that pantry is full and is ready to accommodate students from a temporary to the sixty-three. There's like five, over five thousand pounds of food. And I think that's totally remarkable to help people, especially through what we seem to be going through another surge of trumpet. The, so they are doing birthday boxes and we're going to keep on with the pantry so that children can get snacks during the school. And I'm sure they've accommodated the two-week breaks so that nobody didn't go to bed without food for the holiday season. There was, they had good success at the business expo. Their whole thing is June 11th, which was changed from June 4th to accommodate the, I'm not sure where exactly they're getting it, but their plan will start in February. There is a process of designing the foundation website through DataQ, which is a website design company. And it will be all-inclusive for everything that the foundation does, from their projects to their applications for involving many grants and things of that nature. They're going to try with an alumni page and maybe help keep track of alumni, especially help for whatever the reason, maybe support help or just input. The next meeting for the foundation that will be open to the public will be in February, because January is where their trustee will think it is where they're going to go with their agenda. Now, before I go, I want to give a shout out to Denzel Ward, who is here to my heart, I got his jersey. He's been named to the Pro Bowl of 2022, and he has the Cleveland Brown recipients of the Walter Payton Award. And let's hope that Denzel can be able, you know, beat out all the other competitors and be the Walter Payton recipient. Well, we start from here, no way out. I want to say farewell to that one. And being the football fanatic that I, the wife of the replacements says it all, that it was an honor to share with the field back. And it wasn't necessarily an adult, but it was a phenomenal experience. I worked so much, I think it dreams a lot. And I wish good luck to the board members, and I hope that they have extremely long and successful tenure and enjoy the experience of the board.
All right, so I'm sorry, I stepped on something. Things have gone on over the last summer. I tried to sleep, but I tried to catch the girl once, like. Senate Bill 249 has been signed by the governor, but that's including, I recall from the, it's got a multitude measure within it. Some of them are normal old ones. It extends the time of the district to bring learning house. And then the, the district receives submit there, so you have to, they are required to offer quarterly reports. Require districts to submit an mediation plan within ninety days. Never is already not happened. So in most cases, a lot of systems already have a safety error. It prohibits the use of chronic absenteeism on the twenty-one, twenty-two, and fourth part. So when we suffer people that kids who are being quarantined or they're in a prison school and that's affecting them, that measure is not going to be, and they can't hold them since on the fourth part. And this, this is a big one, because we talked about that safety fourth part, where there is a report card, you can be committed. And this particular piece of legislation adds to schools, superintendents, and principals to that committee. And the three, the three different types of districts have to be represented. Have to have represented from urban, suburban, and not the rural district. So having those actual school people there in that process, I think is a key component. I'm grateful that that's in there. Mandates, and we all saw about mandates, and this is one that people need to take note of. It mandates that financial literacy be integrated in students' social study protocols. So that is something that has something in there. So those are the other, there are other things to be, but those are some of the foot for your higher pieces. Senate Bill 166 has been sent to the governor. It's not signed yet. And what it does is it establishes financial incentives for higher businesses to value work-based learning experiences for students in their technical programs, along with other conditions. So there are other things that we achieve, but so this applies only to the students taking CCCC. House Bill 126, the Senate passed, and it's back to the House for a pickaxe. Senate Bill 221, has had sponsored testimony, which are, yeah, I'm just going to go first. When we get those tax holidays and bar access, you know, buy supplies and you don't pay your taxes. Included in this one, people like the laptops, notebooks, or tablet computers. So if you're buying, I guess, like, the home, I mean, their home box, you would be able to buy that on those tax holidays, maybe not sometimes. Those are big differences, so just keep the thought of that. And of course, it's still in, in the present, but let's hope that that's not going to make this office. That Senate Bill 238 has had a third hearing. It requires, and it changed earlier, required straddle of minutes, enrollment of signers in each school day. And Senate Bill 251 has had a second hearing, which would allow courses under the age of sixteen to work between the hours of seven and nine o'clock in the evening during the school year if they have parental or parental consent. Because right now, the same can't work hours, but again, they're amplified.
I'm not going to cover it with the foundation, I think Judy covered that pretty well. The facilities steering committee, just wanted to give a quick update on that. We had a meeting on December fifteenth, however, it was not as great turnout because it conflicted with the band contract. So we covered that, we added an extra meeting to the process. So our next meeting is going to be on January twelfth, it's just the steering committee, and then we're going to do a community dialogue on February second. So I think the process here, the owner is on January twelfth, the steering committee is going to come up with some ideas to present to the community. It's just feedback on numbers, buildings, what grades we want together, and you know, where we think ideal location of buildings would be if we choose about the building. And then we're going to present that to the community on February second, steering committee again on February twenty-third, and hopefully a piece of information to the board in March. So that's where the steering committee stands. You want to add to it? Okay, all right, two thirty-seven.
All right, I recommend you approve the consent items listed.
One second.
Few items here. First, we see the membership in the Ohio School Board Association and joining their legal assistance fund, which is an annual thing we do. We see a donation from Ohio Sports Tyropractic donating shooting trips to the boys' basketball program. Never ceases to amaze me the generosity of our community. You know, when you go down to Capitol Conference and they have the exhibit hall, and there's a bunch of superintendents and board members and treasurers walking along, we offer your business cards, and we throw them in, and then you grab a handful of candy. I won a $200 gift card when I was down there. My name is full. And I'm not allowed to accept it, of course, because I'm a public employee, so the gift card is actually donated to the school district from Northwestern Ohio Security System. So we thank them. And resolution declaring transportation impactful, which would not benefit students to see two kids on that.
And any questions, members? Matt, please follow.
Mr. Marner?
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Where she carries, four zero.
Item two is a recommendation to approve the new job description for this split psoian building and grounds monitor position at the high school.
On the morning?
On the morning.
And I've informed the board about this. This is the one position where we have an employee, when, when kids are there, she's a building and grounds monitor. When kids aren't there, she's a psoian, and this job description quite a long time.
A question? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Marner?
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Where she carries, four zero. Item three is a recommendation to approve the resolution to accept the land donation, man law investment.
On motion?
I'll second.
It's one of the more exciting things that happened to this school district in some time. You know, there's a piece of land, about almost two acres, between the KFC and the Speedway that goes from Highland Road to the butts, our tennis courts. And it's been for sale for some time. We've been interested in it, but not for the price that had been asked. And so what they have done is generously decided to donate that to the school district. This is not land that would be necessarily buildable, but it may serve a purpose of giving us an exit out to Highland Road, like after football games. It may serve as parking. We've got to, now we will take ownership of the land, look at it to see what might be the best use. We're very grateful for this very generous donation of land appraised at $400,000.
The piece of land is kind of flagship. Most of the land is behind the Speedway. It just touches the driveway, the through the Speedway, the KFC. I want to thank them back for all the work that you did to get this done. We presented this donation idea to us and said that it has to be done by, I forget the name, the forecourt, whatever the name was. And so we had to do a total search, check the insurance, and check the easements, and get all the necessary materials, and that's kept on happening. I appreciate that we've got a long time, so we don't want to pass up the chance to get almost feeling for the land, even if it's not something we're going to do. Like you always said, could potentially give us some outlay to Highland Road, to step up a little for us. You have any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Marner?
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Where she carries, four zero. Item four is a recommendation to approve the posted meter lease at Midland Middle School.
On motion?
I'll second.
Yeah, this is one of the less exciting things, it's worth summing up, it's a posted meter, effortless.
Uh, what are your questions? What, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Marner?
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Where she carries, four zero. And item five, I recommend you approve personnel items listed.
On motion? I'll second.
You know, one really remarkable thing from this month's personnel is the first retirement of the school year. Kim Allen, middle school art teacher, has announced her retirement effective at the end of the school year. Kim's been with us for a long, long time, and we are going to miss her, and we should all the best in her retirement. Really nothing else in the, in the personnel agenda that I was seeing.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Marner?
Yes.
Ms. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Where she carries, four zero. And that concludes my report. All right, so for me, I have our usual consent items that I've recommended for approval. It's the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one regular special boarding minutes, as well as the November twenty-twenty-one financial board report.
On motion?
One second.
Let me just do a brief, a brief quick update on the fourth part, where we're seeing the group of members. On the revenue front, we are 1.2% higher than where we were last year for the same timeframe. That's $24.9 million compared to $24.6 million last year. One of the major focuses that I look at when I'm looking at determining what to explain to our comparisons, the most significant increase is the all other revenues line item. And that is showing a 48.3% increase from last year for the same timeframe. What comprises that would be our tax salaries that we receive, as well as kindergarten tuition, other student fees. And so because of last year, where we were, you know, certain things of COVID and school activities compared to this year, were basically brought, that's driven that higher compared to last year. Some areas on your side where we're lower is in the state restricted and unrestricted, I'm sorry, unrestricted state grants and aid line item, showing an 11.8% decrease. As I've explained previously, there's been a significant change in how the state funds the school district. And the most notable is open enrollment. Historically, that was reported as expenditure, now recorded as a net deduction to our revenues. So that's why it's showing a low revenue for this year compared to last year. The only other item on the revenue front would be the other financing sources, and that is showing a 94.3% increase. Most notably, the DWC premium refund that was received last year. Obviously, we don't have to receive that this year, so that's explaining what significance that is. On the expenditure side, we are showing a 2.2% increase over last year. So currently, we're at $21.8 million in expenditures compared to last year at the same time of $21.3 million. Some notable items that I'd like to point out is our purchase services line item, they're showing a 6.4% increase. Some of those, some of the items that are factored into that increase is our transportation at the time of your bill payment. We are currently caught up on our bill payments, whereas last year we were one month behind. And then as well as utilities, we're seeing a higher usage of utilities because we're using buildings 24/7, and that's compared to what we were last year. And then also on the. And then also on the capital outlay line, it's showing 11.3% decrease. Last year, we had purchased some COVID-related furniture so that kids could be compliant with distance in and such. We have not purchased that obviously this year and that's explaining that decrease. So overall, it's a 2.2% increase in total expenditures. Our net income through November is 3.1 and it's very close to where we were last year of just under $3.3 million, as well as our unencumbered fund balance that is showing us through November 2021 of $11.7 million, similar to the same amount last year. So right now, we're pretty much in line, but we're really worth any change last year at the same timeframe. And for those out there, I know sometimes this is kind of hard to see up on the screen. I do post these to the district website. Keep in mind, it's a month behind because of the way it's formed, for example. So these are available on the district website for closer review. And that is the consent items.
Any other questions for that? Brown?
All right. Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Carey is four zero. Item number two is a resolution to approve adjustments to the appropriations for the 2021, 22 fiscal year, and I recommend for approval.
All motion?
I'll second.
Basically, what I've notified you in my manner is that these appropriations adjustments are necessary due to the carryover made approved by ODE for our grants from last year. A component of our grants aren't spent and therefore the state has to approve the carryover in the new grant year. And that is what is taking place for this appropriation. I recommend that.
Any other question? Brown?
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Carey is four zero. Item number three is a resolution to approve the purpose and budget for the black student unit, and I recommend for approval.
All motion?
I'll second.
This is just a, I don't know what she said.
You want to add anything?
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Carey is four zero. And then finally, a resolution to approve the fund transfers of $13,692.15 from the cost center permanent improvement fund this year, 2018, to the overall new permanent improvement cost center that just has been created, and I recommend for approval.
All motion? Do you motion off? Can you just do a quick explanation of cost?
Yes. So this is more or less a house loan, like you said, Mr. Warren. Back in 2017, the board approved a $500,000 transfer from the general fund into the permanent improvement fund and at that time, it assigned it a special cost center. This is the money that's remaining from that original transfer. And now with the new destination that the board made, I would like to consolidate those as a cost center for record keeping and kind of, yes, on purpose.
All right, Mr. Warren?
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Carey is four zero. And I think it's under four.
All right. Next meeting will be our organizational meeting on Monday, January 10th at 6:00 PM, where we will vote for officers for next year and set up board committees and, you know, stuff like that. Next regular meeting will be Monday, January 10th at 7:00 PM, as we're seeing regular. Can I get a motion again?
All motion.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
I'm a guess. Thank you, everybody.